All right, I have six o'clock.
All of them?
Yep.
All right. One, two, three, okay. The time is six o'clock. I will call to order the special meeting of the Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, February 11th, 2020. Ms., could you please take the roll?
Mrs. Nadeau?
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Keener?
Here.
Mr. Helderly?
Here.
Mrs. Sims?
Here.
Mrs. McConville is here. Uh, Mrs. Allman?
Here.
And Mrs. Seima?
Here, thank you. And I would note that for student board policy, Pam, Allman is participating telephonically tonight with us. So, thank you Pam for making time to be able to do this.
Oh, thanks for doing it for me.
All right. Um, that brings us to item number two on our agenda, public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Anyone called a blue card, come on over. Thank you.
I'm just about to go.
Uh, yeah, it's a good question today. Where would you like to speak?
I can go over.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, we'll ask Ms. to take, um, to run the time. I think you've done this before, so I think you know how it works. That you have three minutes to speak and, uh, the board will listen, but we're not able to answer questions or comments.
This was not.
Whenever you're ready.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay. So I'm just curious to make comment about the mailer regarding the social. That's the only section. So, if I say my name's Heather Druckowski, I live in Lisle. My son attends Lyle Elementary. My daughter Madeline used to attend Lyle Junior High, but she had to seek asylum in Dumbness Grove. She is going to a school in Dumbness Grove because her S E L wasn't left here. Yeah, to, to her I E P was denied, um, her I E E was denied, and then the final straw was, um, she was stabbed inside the school. So I took her up for S E. So according to this agenda, without placement program, I don't see how, the only thing I'm reading between the lines here is that they're trying to reinvent the wheel. There's already programs established like Giant Stalk. And I think this looks like a way for the school board and the superintendent to avoid consolidation, to agree. I think since Keith was the act reached his contract, this is a smoking mirror attempt to try to centralize the I E E school, which I think has eased up a lot today. There's an internal crisis going on. This is a stack of papers from my attorney of all the problems of this school district. I am suing this school district, and you guys are going to try to put a band-aid on it. And it's horrendous. And this mindfulness-based curriculum thing that you mentioned has been around for a while. It's mentioned in this deck of legal papers. And according to these papers, my daughter should have been receiving S E L help. Eight years. She never received it. Never got off. So, in conclusion, like I said, I think this is a smoking mirror attempt. I think there's an internal crisis, and there is rumor or data, Dr. Fugiyak, that he's in this office and he's in the sheet of work, which is suspicious. And you guys are not being very transparent about anything, and I'm concerned about the well-being of all the children and sisters. That's why I say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? All right. That brings us to item number three on the agenda, discussion of student outplacement. Outplacement program for Lyle High School.
All right, well, thank you for joining us tonight. We set up the table a little bit different and arranged the order because we really want this to be more of a conversation than a formal presentation. We do have some slides that we've included in the board packet information. We're not going to read from those. Um, we're not going to present those. It's more so that you don't have to take a ton of copious notes during our presentation. Um, but there's also a flow associated with it. So, uh, first document under the discussion of student outplacement program. If you look at the first slide, it looks something like that. We're going to kind of follow that order. And slide one of 12, like I said, I'm not going to read, but basically it's a visual to show that at the high school, um, we have some needs, some students who have some real needs that are difficult to fit into one of our current slots. We have our regular program. Um, unfortunately, sometimes choices are made by students that they're suspended, but we don't real, really feel like if they're outside of the program, they can learn as well if they're in suspension. Sometimes they make choices that expel them. And luckily during the time that I've been here, we haven't had any of those students. But usually that step right before expulsion is an outplaced program. And so, um, we've had some successes there, but we feel like often many of our students are in that gray area between not really fitting into the regular program, suspension isn't really going to help, and those outplaced programs, there's, there's some benefits to that, but it isn't really tied to the needs of those particular students. And so, we're going to talk a little bit about how that program currently works, um, some of our experiences. Um, we will go into closed session. We're not going to be specific about students, but we do want to talk a little bit about some of the things that specific students are struggling with. But because we are so small, we don't want that to be an open public because, again, when you only have 450-some students at a high school, um, we don't want to violate anyone's rights. And so, we'll go through what the program is, what our options are, go into closed session, get into a little bit more specifics as to the needs of some of these students, and then we'll come back into open session to continue that discussion. Any questions about the topic or the process tonight?
No.
Okay. Then at this point, um, who could I turn it over to?
I'm going to start. Good evening, and thank you so much for coming and having us here for our proposals and this discussion. Uh, our first proposal from the high school tonight is going to address a situation that we've kind of been monitoring for the last couple of years. Um, and I, but I want to be clear, this has absolutely nothing to do with special education. So I want you to, you need to understand that. There is a difference between outplacement when we're talking about special education versus outplacement of gen ed students. So we are focusing on the general ed population. And in general, for the last, you know, however many years, kids generally will get outplaced, that do get outplaced, for one of two reasons from the high school. First would be they are deficient in the credits that they have. They have gotten behind, they don't have enough credits to graduate. And that's one of the reasons why we started looking at this was graduation rate. We were looking at, you know, our graduation rate. We had, we've had really good years at 100%. We've had some years, you know, getting down to like the 93%. That's about seven kids in Lyle that aren't graduating. So why is that? And, and are most of them have been outplaced? Most of them have been credit deficient? And, and to say might have been special ed, but like as I said, they went on another path. So we're looking at these kids that, um, they were credit deficient for all. The other reason is behavioral issues. There, they have, for some reason, the daily traditional schedule of being in a class for 50 minutes, going to the next class for 50 minutes, does not work for every single student. And sometimes it will, it will come out in their behavior. And their behavior not only impacts their learning, but it's impacting the learning of other students i- in the class. And so, we look to two programs. Ombudsman is who we use, the district uses for, um, gen ed credit recovery. And, um, the county, DuPage County Safe School Partners for Success is who we use for outplacement for behavioral issues of gen ed students. Now, a couple of years ago, if you recall, the state of Illinois passed Senate Bill 100. And Senate Bill 100, uh, basically wanted, was focused on keeping those, keeping kids in school. Before we would go to and jump to an out-of-school suspension, we needed to be able to show that we had had numerous interventions, and here's what we tried to do before reaching that, before reaching that point. Um, while it had the best of intentions for us, it kind of put us i- in a bind. We did, at that point in time, develop our in-school program, and Jim O'Hara has been the head of that since, since that time. Um, and the in-school program originally initially started doing what it was supposed to be doing, but then we started seeking, seeing these growing numbers of kids that in-school was not really for them. Um, and outplacement in the past may have been our route, but we kind of are missing this middle step. We don't want kids to leave either. We, we want to, we kind of agree with the state, the Senate Bill 100. Keeping kids in the building is ultimately best for that kid. But I think the, that missing piece is what we're here to talk about tonight. So I am going to turn things over to Jim O'Hara and Jen Zimmerman. Um, this is talking about the struggles we've had and why we've come up with this proposal tonight. Jim? I feel like we're in the news.
Well, first off, I just want to say, I really appreciate you guys making the time tonight to hear us out. I think the, uh, we were excited about the proposal and looking at the opportunity to, uh, fit the needs of our students. And I think Jeff said it best, that we, we had this need and it's been growing, and we're seeing the numbers to back it up and seeing the behaviors to back it up where there's this perception, we don't want to alter and replace students. We want to keep students in our building, and how can we best do that with some of the behaviors that we're seeing? So, um, as Jeff kind of pointed out, if you look on slide number three, which is, uh, in the red, this current outplace program, we're really looking at for credit recovery, we're looking at behavioral issues, um, and then also just kind of thinking about the other population as well. So if these kids are constantly being disrupted in the classroom or there's major disruptions in the classroom, how that has an impact on the other 30 kids that are in the classroom? So we're not just looking at the students that are committing infraction, but also looking at the rest of the classroom and how that has an impact on that environment. Um, currently what we do, so ombudsman, we, we really use ombudsman for credit recovery. If we are sending a student to ombudsman, it's usually a junior or senior, um, and that is strictly for credit recovery. We transport them out in Naperville for a half a day, and then they spend a half a day with us at Lyle. Partners, uh, that is primarily for behavioral, but also could be an academic piece tied to as well, and also those are the credit recovery, uh, options as well. But primarily for major behaviors where we have exhausted our resources, we've used in-school suspension, maybe multiple times, we've used out-of-school suspension. All right, we, we now need to do the next step in, um, using partners, which is up in Addison.
And partners, I'm sorry. Partners is really for, in lieu of a major suspension or in lieu of an expulsion. So those are not for minor infractions, they're for in lieu of major suspension or expulsion.
Yeah, classified as regional safe.
Safe school.
Safe schools.
And I have a couple of questions. If you give, if you're going to get to this later on, then just tell me.
Okay.
Sure.
Um, otherwise, so for the credit recovery, when they go for a half a day and then come back to us for half a day, I assume it's recovering credits that they missed from previous years? So do they, then are they delayed, and we are already anticipating that they're going to be beyond when they would normally graduate?
So typically we've used ombudsman for juniors and seniors when they, when we get to that point where they're, they're not on track to graduate. There's no more room in their schedule for a seven-period day to meet their needs. Um, so that's why we've typically used it for juniors and seniors because we, we can play a little bit with the freshman sophomore, but then junior, senior year where there's just not enough time in the day. So ombudsman allows us for them to work at their own pace and be able to earn credits back. That's why they, they're three hours on the computer in the morning, so from seven to 10. And then they, so some schools that's it, but for us, because it's credit recovery so much, they then come to us for four, five, six, and seven, so that they can get both credit recovery and still have that school experience through their day.
But are they missing classes in the morning?
In the morning, yes. So those are where they're getting their credit recovery, or other ones that they definitely have to get in. Um, so for example, we have a student, um, if we have a student that needs like English grade 10, putting them in English grade 10 and English 11 or 12 at the high school, that's a lot of English through the day, um, so that they've already not been successful at. So what we'll do is we'll have them take English 10 at ombudsman where they can work at their own pace, and then take the one with their age, appropriate age peers.
At the same?
At the same time.
Same year?
Same year. Mm-hmm.
Right. So that does keep them on track?
Yes.
I was just trying to figure out.
No, yes. Yes, because they can make up.
It's online.
Online curriculum, so they can work at their own pace. So once they're finished, they can start the next one, or they can work on two at a time.
So they can make up, like, potentially a whole semester in a shorter time?
In a short time. Usually they say at most you could make up between three and four classes a semester.
Okay. And then my question regarding the Partners for Success, I understand it's not a special ed thing, but is it similar in some ways to special ed? Like that we place them, we pay for their placement there, then they, we, whatever credits they earn there, they come back to us?
Yes, they're still our students.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Jeff. I was just going to say, do classes they would be missing when they do the portion of that ombudsman? Um, that would be like elective classes?
Not necessarily. It really depends on our schedule. So if we, if there's an English 11 class and, and let's say an algebra two class that they need it at the same time, they can only take one of those, and then they're running out of time. So for most kids, it's their core classes that they failed. But we often, we're putting them in seven core classes, is not going to get them to come to school or have them be successful. So we try to mix in some of those electives along with that credit recovery for those core classes.
So if they're starting this as a junior, does that mean they're probably going to have to do it as a junior and a senior?
Not necessarily. It truly is dependent on the kid.
Okay.
Because they can make up those classes. Like literally it depends on how fast that kid works because it's online curriculum that they do pre-test, they work on their, their materials, they do a post-test, so that they have to, um, earn their credit that way.
It could, it could be that.
It could.
But they could also, you could have someone who works on the ombudsman during the summer and gets caught up.
Okay.
Ombudsman does have a summer session where you can make up two classes.
Oh, okay. And it, it sounds like Jeff sort of alluded to that it's not, hasn't necessarily been as successful as you would like in getting the kids to graduation?
Um, it truly depends on the student. Um, what we found is hard is we're not monitoring that. Um, while we get reports, we're not there day-to-day monitoring, um, the student's work. So that is, you know, I will meet with students and say, how's it going? And they'll tell me one thing, and then I have to email and say, how are they doing? And they're saying, they're progressing this fast, but then we don't, we're not necessarily getting the same story.
And do we feel like the things that they've learned in that program, like if they take, say, in algebra two, do they come back and they're on target?
Yes.
When they go into our class, they've learned enough, they're, they're not still behind?
And so we, we tell them what classes they need to take. So it's not like a kid's going in there and saying, I want to take art appreciation, P E. The, you know, um, we tell them what classes they're going to take there, what classes they're going to take at Lyle.
But the, and the curriculum there is significantly, or sufficiently rigorous or whatever that it matches with our curriculum?
Yes.
They, you know, there's not a discrepancy?
No.
Okay.
No. No. If anything, sometimes they have to, um, because it's self-paced and it's a lot of individual learning, they're doing some more things on their own than if they're in front of a teacher.
Okay.
Which is not a skill that those kind of kids usually develop.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And then we have, for credit recovery, we have additional summer programs, correct?
For English.
For English.
English.
Okay. Remember last week you did a presentation on those specifically English that we were.
It is specifically English, so that our freshmen who would fail a semester of English one.
Right.
Are not doubling up in their sophomore year on English one and English two. So we had that, so we, we saw that that was the main one. That was, and, and now in English three also is kind of backing us up. So now we have a summer option so that kids can, obtain that credit and not have to double up during the normal school year.
Is that freshman or freshman and sophomore?
Um, freshman and.
We're, we're looking at the numbers to see what's the best for our needs of our students right now.
Right. It's facilitated by a facilitator, but it, those are, uh, based on B Y U classes.
Yep. I mean, I particularly liked that presentation because we're catching them early because if they're behind there, right? It snowballs as they go through their career, so it'd be interesting to what, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If we have for freshman, and really for all the grades.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, so that when they get to senior year, they're graduating.
The past couple of years when we've used ombudsman the most, it's been for transfer students. Students who have come into us credit deficient. Um, so I would, if, if I was to go back and look at the last five years of ombudsman, the majority of those students have been transfer students.
Can you just ballpark on average, how many kids go to each program each year approximately?
So for ombudsman, we're about two, um, depend, for ombudsman. I'm going to say for partners, we could be using partners a lot more. We currently have, well, we have like two to three, depending on the year.
Very.
Currently we're at three.
We're going to get to it later.
We're at, but I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, yeah.
Okay. I'll hold my question.
Um, I, I think if you have questions, keep asking. Because this is casual and informal, so feel free to cut us off or stop us. Um, and the third one on that slide, we also have this rebound. Rebound is a program developed by the Regional Office of Education in lieu of suspension. So when you spend a student five or more days, they decide to create a program at, um, up and at in the same place where Partners is, where instead of a student just being home for five days or for seven days or however long their suspension is, they could attend the rebound program, and it's kind of like a loop suspension. So there's still being academic work instead of being home and doing nothing. Um, there's a source worker trying to work on behavior. Um, so it's a really nice piece. It, it's very hard logistically to kind of set it up and get that going, which we'll discuss as we go through this. Uh, but that is an option for short-term out-of-school suspension. Okay? So when you think about Partners, that is for a long term, probably a semester, a year, maybe longer than that. When you think about Rebound, it's really for five days or for seven days. Um, and Ombudsman is our online recovery, which could be based on the needs of the juniors. Okay? Does everybody understand our current outplacement situation?
Yes.
Okay. If you go to the next slide, which is the blue slide, challenges current options. So Senate Bill 100 is, um, kind of something that has kind of swapped, swapped the nation. And the, the mindset line of Senate Bill 100 is that we should be keeping kids in school. And if we can keep kids in school, we can work with them, we can change their behavior. And I, I think we agree with the idea of it. Should they be at home doing nothing, causing more trouble, or keeping them in school and trying to work with them? I, I think it makes sense. Um, and as a, as a spin from that, we have used our in-school suspension or in-school program very often, and that's kind of our, our kind of go-to. So when students, if there is major disruptions during the day or major incidents, we, instead of suspending them out of school, we are using the in-school room. And so, when we talk about it, which I'll, I'll show some numbers later, when we talk about some of those numbers, just because a kid's going in school doesn't mean it's not a significant event. It's just we're choosing to keep them in school instead of sending them out of school. Um, but there's also this mindset of, oh, with Senate Bill 100, we're not suspending students. And then you get into this kind of track of, well, how many times should we use in-school program? Twice? And then we outplace them? Three times do we outplace them after that? Four times? And it's really that, that general question, and there's a perception, which, number one, we don't want to outplace students, but we're getting put in this position where we have certain students that are repeat offenders, and Partners is becoming the overwhelming option of, of something maybe we should use more often than we currently are. Um, you know, so when Jen can't talk about some of the numbers, we'll share with you later, but we feel like those numbers can be much higher than what they're at right now. But we don't want to send them out of our building. Um, Jeff kind of mentioned this earlier, we just really don't have a middle ground. So it's, we're, we're using it to in-school suspension a lot, you know, a lot of those maybe there's an out-of-school tied to it. But then, okay, what's next? What happens when they do it again? Like, and there's not that middle ground before we kind of quote-unquote exhaust all our resources and send them to Partners for Success. Um, and I mentioned this point, you know, when we send students to other buildings, whether it's ombudsman, whether it's Partners, you kind of lose that connection, we lose that monitoring, and we're talking about student success and wanting students to do very well. Well, now we're not seeing them every day. We're, you know, through email, or every once in a while having a phone call with the administration to see how they're doing. Um, but we don't have that, um, that overseer, overseer kind of understand how they are actually doing. They're still concerned Lyle High School students, and we kind of have a gap there. Um, and I think the fourth one is very important. When we do get in a position and we feel like we are forced to outplace a student, that student is no longer gaining that experience at Lyle High School. They don't have that relationship, they don't have that, that, the, the culture that we want them to kind of gain through their four years and through their high school experience. And once we outplace them, there's that, as I mentioned earlier, there's that disconnect that comes with it. And, um, it's, I think it's a big challenge for me because I don't want to do it, and I feel, I feel sometimes stuck because I, I, some of the students where they're kind of in the middle ground of what do we do with them? We're not meeting their needs currently at the high school. We're trying to work with them, we're trying to use the in-school room, and it's not just working. So is the answer just get rid of them, have a greater building? We would like to propose a different option to, to doing that.
And I think it's important when they don't have that connection at Lyle High School, and we want them to transition back, or they're ready to transition back, that transition back becomes even harder. Because they haven't been part of our culture, they haven't been building those relationships with staff. And so it's almost, I, that transition can be very difficult for students.
And I was going to ask, I would assume, yeah, that they get sort of disengaged. Does that make that population less likely to actually graduate? Are they, are they a disproportionate number of students who don't graduate?
Um, when we go back through numbers, there are, there have been students who have not been able to be successful, and they've come back because of that. There's really no relationship that they have. When we, when we do have to outplace the student, it's not always the best circumstances. So we try to go over there and visit them at Partners and those types of things, but that's still not that same day-to-day connection. And no matter how much we say, you're still part of Lyle High School, but they're not seeing anybody from Lyle High School. Um, so I think that that connection to us is, for us to them and them to us is so important.
I think Jeff mentioned earlier, there, there are some students that just, for whatever reason or reasons, to be in a classroom for 50 minutes, and then go to the next class for 50 minutes, and then go to the next class, it just does not work for them. And so what happens is the behavior comes out, and then they get in trouble for that behavior, and then they have to go back, hey, by the way, go back to that classroom now, and then it continues. And then you see academic struggles that come with it, and then further behaviors. Hey, go back to that classroom, figure it out, you know? And we try to work with them, but you only have so much time on a given day. Um, and so that's why we're, we're, we're coming here tonight with this proposal of, of, we, we feel like we need something else to, to meet the needs of our students.
I think at this point, we wanted to go into closed session and talk not specifically about students, ensure their names, but just about the types of things that we're seeing. And again, because we want to be able to respect people's privacy in this community, we're going to go into closed session, and then we'll come back into open session when we get past that specific portion about those students.
Okay. Um, then at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Uh, who's the second one? Okay, hold on.
Ms. can you take the vote?
Yes, Mrs. McConville's an aye. Mrs. Nadeau?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Keener?
Aye.
Mr. Helderly?
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Sims?
Aye.
Mrs. Seima?
Aye, thank you.
And I, if, Pam does not vote, correct? Motion, or do I include Pam in the motion?
No.
Yes?
I think she can, I want to.
Oh, Mrs. Allman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks.
Still in.
Okay. At this time, I entertain a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. At 6:45, we are back in open session of the special board meeting of February 11th, 2020. Um, what's the next step?
Um, I think we were going to just talk about some of the interventions that we have tried leading up to the proposal.
Before we go to the next slide, I do want to talk about the things that we have tried with students. Um, you know, we have, first of all, at the tier one level, we have Learning Lions that's available for all students. Um, that's for academic purposes, those are some, those are things we always remind families and students that they do have.
Can you, what can you say for those who don't have high school students? What would I mind?
Sorry. Learning, Learning Lions is an after-school tutoring program staffed by our teachers. Um, pretty much all, and, yeah, for after-school and before-school. Um, and we try to focus on those areas of English and math, but they can get help in all of those areas for free from 2:45 till 3:45, every, pretty much every day. And then before-school from 6:45 to 7:40. Um, we have student conferences where we meet with the students, we have parent-student teacher conferences, we do classroom observations, um, we have student services support, so whether that is meeting with their guidance counselors, um, we try to have them build a relationship as best we can. So even when they are in the in-school suspension room, that is, if they're in there for more than one day, the counselors do go in there and, or have them come out and meet with them to talk about the future, the things that they've done, to how they can change things, how this doesn't define them, but that they still have this path that they can be successful at. And then social worker and psychologist, there's maybe incentives for positive behaviors. Obviously, we do have detentions in the in-school suspension program. Um, we have to use out-of-school at time. We do use social suspension, um, for some students that we feel that that may be the avenue that we need to go. Um, Jim and I do a lot of home visits throughout the year depending on the student's needs and willingness of the family. But even just that is just to really build that relationship, um, to let the family know that we're here for them. Um, and even if they're having difficulty getting a student here or a student's in trouble, we want to continue to have those, those positive conversations. Um, we do have, um, we work with probation, we work with truancy. Um, for students with academic needs that can have a study hall, we do have smaller intervention study halls For students with academic needs that can have a study hall, we do have smaller intervention study halls where teachers monitor the students' grades and work and try to get them to be more successful throughout the day. We have summer school for English. We have been working a lot with outside therapists, obviously hospitalized. We try to really encourage families to sign release of information so that we can be part of the team for the student. And so one of our roles, both of us kind of also talk to families of students who are hospitalized for whatever reason, to be able to realize that although your student's not here, we know that they're working on themselves and that's the most important thing, and we're here to support you. We don't want them really worrying about some of the nuts and bolts of every day, like calling in or those types of things, or getting work that's on us. So those are just some things, I'm sure I forgot some stuff, but I want you to realize that we do try to do, and as many of those as possible, before we get to that conversation of outplacement.
So with all of this 45 minutes of background information, we're going to take you for another two hours just about the proposal. Our actual proposal would begin in the next school year, in the 2020-2021 school year. And it would be an in-house alternative program where, at the high school, these kids that we have identified as kind of being in the middle ground, not in-school suspension, but maybe not ready for complete outplacement. I also want to be clear, we're not taking outplacement off the table. I mean, that is available to us, the safety school, if we feel we need that, we have to utilize that. However, we think we can reach more kids with a hybrid, an in-house alternative program that would be at the school. And we would try to limit that enrollment from up to about 10 to 13 students, which currently, if you look at who's going to Embudsman and who's outplaced, we might be dealing with three or four students. So we're increasing the number of students that we are trying to intervene with here. And they're doing it in the high school. And we would, some of the same purposes, credit recovery, behavioral issues, transition from an outside if they're coming back from Partners for success. And then in-school suspension, kind of, I mean, we're still working on a lot of the details. But this in-house alternative program, a lot of larger schools have a separate facility. 203 has the Bridge program, I think District 86, Hinsdale, had it in one of their high schools. Streeter, in our conference, has it. And Jen and Jim went to Streeter to see how it works in their building in a small school setting. So we have, the next slide, if you want to go to Slide 7, is just a general idea of what a schedule in this room might look like. Jim, you want to take us through that, or Jen, whoever's, oh, Jen is on the slide.
So we have seven days, we have seven class periods. We kind of, this is what we preliminarily believe it could look like. So check-in in the morning, kind of a morning greet, kind of get the feel of how the students are doing, have them start working on the online curriculum. Every hour have a 10-minute break. Because sitting on a computer, as much as the kids seem they like playing games, it's different when you actually have to do academic work. So that's a lot of screen time and eye strain. So we want to make sure we're giving them that movement break. So you can kind of see there, we talked about the citizenship topic of the day, so really trying to do some more SCL work with them. Also having the Naviance College and Career program be built into this so that they're on mass, so that they're not losing sight of what their goals are. And then potentially a book study depending on the needs of the students that are in there. We also like the idea of something like this because it allows us, if they're at Partners, they're never in some of our electives, and electives are really taken away from them at Partners because they just don't have the ability to offer those type of classes. And those are the classes that some of our kids see the most success. And those are the kids that they behave there, they feel successful there, they're passionate there. So we don't want to lose the sight of that and have students be able to earn those incentives of being able to take electives or even a core class that they may excel in, that they really, we do have students that do really well in civics because they're passionate about that. So finding really what works best for that student and giving them that opportunity to earn the privilege of being able to go to that class. So kind of having that hybrid of online curriculum and in-class. For some kids, we know that PE is, for some kids, it's a nightmare, for some kids, it's a great experience because they get to get off that energy. So being able to be flexible in that. So maybe a student who has earned some rights, some privileges here, takes instead of second hour online, they're in PE class, or they're in civics, or they're in electronic music, depending on what their passion is. Because we don't want to lose that. And a lot of times, these kids, that's what's getting them to our building is those classes. So we definitely want to be able to have those, and we don't, they don't have that opportunity right now at Partners.
I think what you're going to see as we go, keep going through this proposal, is the word flexibility is going to be paramount. And we are literally getting to the nitty-gritty of individualized education. And each individual kid, we are literally going to make their schedule based on what they are able to do, what they can handle, and combining that with what they need to do and what they have to do in order to graduate on time. But being flexible and how many, and what are we doing, and those are all continuously evolving.
Flexibility in the online curriculum piece allows for us to do other services as well. And every student doesn't have to be working at the same pace, at the same time, on the same tools. So maybe three or four are working on an online curriculum piece that they're assigned to that's individualized. And maybe there's another four students that are meeting in a small group, and they're working with the social worker, or they're looking at those Naviance pieces. So there's goal setting in terms of what they're working on with behavior management. So the flexibility is for curriculum as well as services, we are recognizing, some of these, you might have heard of theme of substance abuse, some of those challenges. And looking at how we wrap around those services for these students during that, you know, during those opportunities.
So with the, I mean, this kind of a mixture of basically freshman through senior, right? Which is almost, you'd have to do an online curriculum to have that flexibility.
Possibly.
If the student earned it, they could stay in period three and start doing that online curriculum. They like a certain class, that gives you the flexibility for them to go to that class at that period and swap around their online, going back to your flexibility again. And having it in-house, that means they maintain their relationships with the various student services and teachers that do it in the building, which I would imagine if they're being hopped between schools, they form no relationship with anybody.
Right, that's correct.
Any other questions about the schedule? Okay. So what are we going to, part of what we're going to need is we are going to need staff. So we will be, or are asking for a 1.0 certified teacher along with a 1.0 paraprofessional. To meet the needs of these students, we are going to need the support for these students in that program. Having two staff members in there allows us that flexibility, again, to having a group working on one thing and having somebody else working on something else. So having those two adults in there allows for that. When Jim and I went to Streeter, they had two adults in that, and it was really nice to be able to watch them. If I'm working here with a small group, that person could be working over here. Or here, we're working on some, maybe this is a substance conversation, and this group needs something with grief or something like that, we can be working on different things at different times.
Multiple steps, I'm sorry. I was just going to mention that we also have the flexibility that, you know, students, when we're talking about behavior management, if they need a break or there's a piece, we have the ability to do an escort, take them to another student's building for a breather or whatever that happens to be, without disrupting everything else that's going on or degrailing, you know, the work that others are doing.
My question is, when you went to Streeter and talked to them about their program, has this been successful and more successful in getting their kids to graduation?
Yeah.
Actually, I do have a question about the program, the classes. So I think it was great in terms of the online curriculum, but is there opportunities, are you envisioning opportunities for, let's say, career skills at the high school level? Because maybe when I've heard some of the students who have not passed, the number of courses that haven't passed, that maybe, do we want to get them career-ready as well? Is that?
Yeah, well, we, I think TCD is a viable option, but I think they're going to have to earn TCD because it requires, the attendance piece of that is pretty stringent. I think, you know, we use the example of maybe they can take PE. We've also talked about maybe they could take foods. Maybe it's going to depend upon, or maybe they could take woods. I mean, it kind of depends on where they're at and what they are able to accomplish if we're going to...
I also think based on the needs of the students, it gives us the flexibility of opportunities. We may have, maybe we have more mouths that are interested in a certain area of, why am I drawing a blank on the name? Like engineering or like CTE programs or plumbing or electrical. We can bring people in to also be guest speakers to this group. I also think that Naviance College and Career part and that self-exploration is huge for them to really find out, how do they learn, what are the, what do they feel they're successful at? And what are avenues that they have those strengths or those areas of interest? Because a lot of times, these kids don't know because all they've done is failed.
Sure.
And not been successful. So if we can get them online, looking at their college and career and seeing those pathways, and then that can open up to bigger conversations of what classes they may be able to get out to, to try and see. It just gives us a lot of flexibility to work with the needs of those individual students.
Great.
And another question, I'm guessing maybe you're going to get to, but with BYU, I know with other kids that take BYU on their own time, the family pays for that cost. Would the school district be paying for that cost if it's part of this program?
Yeah, so we're going to talk about that and the cost.
Can you please?
Yeah. So again, the curriculum piece, we're looking at different online curriculums. One is the BYU, which is a little bit different than when individuals do it for advancement or in replacement. Our summer license is a little bit different than what a family may take. Our virtual schools is something the state of Illinois is really partnered with and is promoting and encouraging. They're working really good in a partnership. So we're really talking about what does that look like? While we do have some students that have used that for advancement, worked with for credit recovery or for like a classroom setting like we have in the summer for BYU.
The next slide is that green slide, in-house program benefits. I guess this is my passion of this whole proposal, is I deal with a lot of negative things throughout the day. And I could, I feel I have a pretty good rapport with some of these students that I mentioned earlier. And, but they're just not successful in that classroom for whatever the reason is. And so to me, I get excited about the idea of being able to work with these kids. And hey, this environment doesn't work for you, but we have another place where you can be successful and you can grow and you can do very well for yourself. And so when you look at the benefits, we're not here to say this is going to be a perfect solution and it's going to be a slam dunk, but we feel like we, what we're doing right now is not working and we need to try. I'm going to kind of side through a lot. After school today, I played basketball with a couple of students in our building and a couple of kids that were in trouble with me, that had issues with me prior to that. And it was amazing the power of relationships that you can build with students and how that completely changes them. These kids were shaking my hand afterwards, saying all these nice things about me. I'm sure once I was going to change.
That's a job to having to watch you everywhere.
A big piece of this program to me is you're building relationships, you're not forcing a kid to do something in this classroom where they just can't be successful. We're providing them another option, another avenue, another path for them to evolve themselves. And I think a lot of them can do very well in this type of program. Another point that I mentioned earlier, when we talk about these significant disruptions or daily disruptions, what does that look like in the actual classroom for the other 25 kids that want to learn and are constantly bothered by that or we take classroom time away from that? So I think it has a drastic improvement for the regular classroom. It's in our building, social work, psychologist, counselor, student services, that we have that work, like I mentioned earlier, we have the ability to monitor these students and see how they're doing. And it's not an email from another building or a phone call from the building or I'm going to stop over there in a month and a half and I'll come say hi to you. You know, we talk about just being a part of, you know, one of the neat things about being in Lyle High School for four years now and just Lyle in general is the culture, the experience, the relationships. Well, once we use outplacement, as Dan mentioned, there they go. And you kind of break that connection. As Jen mentioned earlier with the schedule, the schedule is online curriculum, but there's going to be that SCL, there's going to be that decision-making component of, all right, all these students are in there, they made poor decisions, what to work on that a little bit more in this structured, consistent program where we can identify and we can provide the help and there's that relationship with that instructor that hopefully can make a difference. And I think just in general, we, when we talk about legislation or we talk about a school and what we feel is right, we want to exhaust everything we can in our building before we say, this is not the place for you and you need to go up to Addison and spend the rest of your high school career there. And I just don't think that's a good, it's not fun doing it, it's not fun for the parents. It is, there's transition issues with that. That usually means students are out of school for numerous days before we can even get transportation or acceptance to those places. And so we just feel, the reason we're here tonight and the reason we're stealing your student tonight is we feel the benefits are just outweigh everything else, and why not try? With that said, the next slide, we do feel like, you know, I would say it's something that's going to be brand new. I'm sure there's going to be some challenges with it. And Lyle High School is, you know, we mentioned Streeter earlier, Streeter is a very large building for its size. So one of the challenges we would face is the limitation as far as, you know, the smaller-sized building where these students would be housed, and we've had some general discussions about that. The number of students, that could change, you know, that could change every year, that could change every month. You know, we might, we had that 13 students for fourth time, we might be down to six students. So it's hard to tell you, hard to give you every month, how many students are going to be in there. And I think we also, part of it is our students being successful in there and monitoring that on a monthly semester basis.
Yeah, Jim, you raised a question in my head when we talked about the number of students could be fluid. So what you're saying then, when a student is placed in that program, they're not committed to that program for the year. So if they improve, they're able to transition back at whatever time it works for them? Would that be correct? Or are they expected to stay in that program for a whole semester? Or how would that part work?
So I envision two parts to it. Number one is our in-school program, so like the shorter-term in-school suspension, we're still going to use that room, so you're still going to have some kids that are going to be in there for that. But they will be out in a couple of days. But then, yes, you would have the longer-term placement. And in my mind, it would be a minimum of the semester and you kind of evaluate it from there. And if this is being successful, do we want to even go back to the other area? So I think that's a, as we talk about earlier, the flexibility, it kind of determines on the student, see how they're doing. But I think the minimum would be if they were finished out the semester, we'd kind of reevaluate that.
Okay. So with the 10 to 13 students, is that just for the current high school students right now? Or have, are you envisioning identifying eighth grade incoming freshmen for next year that may need to start in this program based on their background or their needs? Or are you just thinking it's going to start with sophomores through seniors in this class?
I think our mindset is not to have freshmen.
Freshmen.
Possible. As a last resort, maybe, but I don't think we want a student coming into our building from eighth grade and then going into that type of program.
Okay.
So I think it would, the mindset would be sophomores through seniors. What was your first question?
No, that was it. If it was just sophomore, if, yeah, no, that's sophomore.
We want to give the freshmen an opportunity to transition to the building, get to know people, have an opportunity to not necessarily always have, not to have a track record. Like we always talk about kind of coming in fresh, it's a new building, new expectations, a little bit different requirements and those types of things academically. So that's why we even bring kids back from Partners that freshman year because we don't, it's harder to transition them back as a sophomore than everybody else had their first year. We want to give them that, we want to build that relationship with them and not all of us, not just start off by saying, hey, welcome to our alternative program here. You know, we want to try to give them that opportunity and for us to be able to do all of those strategies is possible before we get to that point.
Great, thank you.
And I think it's also important to have some sort of cap on the number of students that are in there because we don't want to just turn into a dumping, oh, this is going to happen to some of my class, let's put them in the dorm. No, we need to work with that student, we need to work with that family. What have we done prior to that?
Sure.
Before we use this type of program. We want to work out the kinks of an online curriculum, as you kind of mentioned earlier, versus the Lyle curriculum and to kind of transition into that type of program as well as the transition back to the regular curriculum and, you know, kind of work through that. And then it is just, in general, the idea of this program is to meet the needs of students. So, but that's not always just an easy either and stamp our fingers, so we're going to need to meet the... we're going to need to meet the needs both for their behaviors as well as for any mental need.
Firstly, you're not stealing our time. I think tonight, honestly, I really appreciate this, having our full attention on an evening like this without the other topics we have every month. I think this is hugely important. I like the nature of this program, keeping our kids in our system. That's huge. I would be one concerned about if those kids would get some sort of stigma of being in this program. So there's something that we can do so that kids are like, oh yeah, you're in that program, so what? You know, the other kids are in another program. You know, it's something with, to make sure that knows for those kids that are in that room, if that makes sense. But yeah, that would be my only one concern that they, when I think that's stigma.
And that would be a challenge with this.
Yeah, gosh, it's high school.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
It'd be interesting, but if they can be integrated into other classes and they go out and do other integrations with the rest of the student body, and you guys are good at, you know, who their friend circles are and supporting that from my one day of education in high school last year. You know, you get that, I mean, that's.
And you survived.
I did, I did.
He has not come back.
So anyway.
The last slide, well, the number 11 slide is, I'd like you to take a focus on that. The pink chart is our estimate of what the 1.0 instructor, and that's based on a master's plus five placement, and the 1.0 paraprofessional would cost, along with a very estimated cost of what an online curriculum, and this is based on 10 kids. So this is, so it could be less, you know, there could be more. So that, that number, I mean, and both sides are estimates, so it's hard to estimate because we just don't have the details. We wanted to compare apples to apples. So base, you know, we generally, maybe we'll have one or two kids that go for a half a year to ombudsman and another three kids go for a semester to Partners for Success. But if we had 10 kids going the full year and we split those 10 with eight going to Partners and two going to ombudsman, the 80/20 differential seemed to be representative of what we're usually dealing with. As we said earlier, we pay for placement and tuition at those, for all of those students and we pay for the transportation for all of those students. That last line that says teacher rate would also be incurred because currently in our in-school suspension, our learning supervisor, who he starts the day at like 9:40, 10 o'clock. So first and second hour, we have to pay teachers to be in that in-school room and so that's what that number is.
Okay.
So if there was, if there was no change and we had 10 kids that we were going to outplacement to ombudsman and partners next year, we would be looking at somewhere a total, if they were going to go for the whole year. And then the pink is the in-house cost for our program that we're proposing.
What I find amazing about this is when you look at outplacement, 50, 54% is roughly transportation alone and not even education.
Right, just getting there, but, yes.
And that is a higher amount than actually your in-house proposal, which is pretty much you go through off your lines, it's all about the student curriculum.
I didn't necessarily anticipate that we were going to end up at this slide, that, you know, I was thinking, okay, this is going to be a higher cost. The fact that it's so much less than out of.
But one thing we want to be clear is right now we have about four students who are in the green program and the cost, and so we're not paying that amount.
Right.
You know, we've got six kids that are just kind of in this limbo right now. And so as Jeff said, we want to compare apples to apples, like we could put all 10 kids in that program and compare it to what the in-house is. So it really is half, less than half the cost, but at the same time, we don't want you to think that we're currently have 10 kids, the outplacement regrets, but we could.
Yeah.
And we think about those choices, but our current options don't work for our student body. And so continuing to do what we're doing isn't working for the kids and so that's why we're thinking it would be less expensive and actually better for our students to give this a try and evaluate it in a few years and continue to report back to you how the program is or isn't going. Well, 10 might be high, 10 might be low, but we at least want to try something different knowing our current options aren't working the best.
It takes an awful lot to get a kid in the outplace program. We could actually put them in this program sooner, right? And if they're successful earlier to get over whatever their situation is sooner, and you don't even think about outsource placement. So if those are not apples to apples, you're also looking at a preventative solution here.
But not even like fugging over some sort of situation. It's an alternative way of some, maybe learning, maybe these students are doing well in that situation. So I think it's really good to have different ways of learning. So having this other program that, you know, students can still be with friends and still be in with teachers that they like and be able to take like a class that they like as electives, but still have staff that can help them get through the core classes that they need to get through to actually graduate. I think that's really right.
As you pointed out, we have all the, we touched a little bit on it, we have all the internal supports within the building that they have access to, but they wouldn't have access to that at another place.
I think two things struck me. Number one is that we've talked a lot in the past about portrait of a graduate. What is the portrait of a successful graduate? And then not everybody's path is the same. And this is finding a way for the kids whose path doesn't look like everybody else's to still get there and be successful. And so I appreciate you guys for trying to find a way and a path for those kids to get there. That is what we're here for, right? Students first. And I think something else that keeps resonating in my head is something that we heard earlier that is home trauma. And, you know, there's not much we can do about home trauma, but I appreciate that we're doing everything we can to maybe alleviate and address that. So I guess that is the thing I'm in support of.
I think from a measurement standpoint, I would say I think the academic achievement of the students in the program, but also to be interested in the number of fractions and incidents and how that reduces whatever respect. So we can address both those aspects and what other aspects you think are relevant.
Do you, so do you have a location in mind in the building?
We have gone through a number of options. We will probably end up converting computer lab that's upstairs that is hardly ever used anymore because they all have a problem. We'll convert that into a classroom. We want the room to be kind of close to student services and close to the main office. So that's kind of where we're at right now. But yeah, we have a number of different options on the table.
Okay. The only reason I, one of the reasons I asked, wanted to make sure we have the space for it, but also in your budget, I mean, knowing who the demographics of these students, what I would hate to do is, you know, I'm sorry, I just think like, you know, the middle, we were talking middle child, so everyone gets like the hand me down, the left doors. And we, we would want it to be a place that they would want to feel successful at and want to go to. So if there are needs, like desks and things, what they need to feel like it's more of a home and a safe place for them to be in, I would like to, you know, if that, if you need to include that in your budget.
That's not in here, we, I think we would handle that through our budget process.
Okay, got it.
There is a little bit of a perk involved with the curriculum component of this, which is throwing out that some of the options that we're looking at are more of a site license type of opportunity. And so if we, and they're still in this price range, and if that was something that we would look at, then we're looking at benefiting students curricularly outside of just these 10 kids. So we can look at supporting some of our homeschool work, some of our in-class work, some of our credit recovery opportunities. So it's a broader reach for that amount of money.
Okay. Does anyone else have more questions about this topic?
No, very exciting.
So with this, if the board is supportive, we would bring a recommendation at our February meeting for your.
I think it sounds like we are.
I'm supportive of it, yeah.
And so it's not that you won't have questions at the regular meeting, this was our chance to have a detailed discussion about this, let you have a chance to process it. In a few weeks, we will bring it for further discussion and then for ultimately a vote.
Thank you for, you did a lot of hard work and coming up with this, really appreciate it and you did a lot of.
Thank you.
Well, Jim is the one who has to deal with it.
We can just have Jim.
So we do have another agenda item, but knowing that we're adults and it's hard for us to sit this long, I would propose just a five-minute break for anyone who needs to take a break and I think we need to swap out a few batteries here.
That sounds great. All right, we will be in recess, 7:18 to 7:23. Get into the math there quickly.
7:18 to 7:25.
We're in recess until 7:23.
Okay, 7:24.
So we're back into open session when they will do it. Shortly, I'm certain. Item number four in our agenda is the discussion of staff and student support system. Who wants to start?
I can, I can start that off. I'm not going to say it's a shorter topic, but I think it's equally important. We wanted to meet with you and talk about some of the needs in the buildings and some of the shifts that we anticipate we're going to be. Even some of the things, we're not going to necessarily need board action, but want to make you aware and have an opportunity to ask questions and understand why some of these shifts are happening. If you look at the document that we've shared as much as possible, the continuous improvement framework, as much of what, why we do what we do. And so the department heads were new about five years ago, but their role was definitely limited. They had about one period a day to be able to do department head type work, which is really monitoring the budget and actually communicating some of the larger discussions they did need periodically. But that's really expanded over the last few years. And so continuous improvement framework touches on almost all of those things. I'm not going to read it to you, but basically we expected to expand the roles, to have them more involved in looking at our curriculum, focusing on best instructional practices, helping to look at our data individually for the students and how we can grow. In-house professional development was a huge part of what they did. They serve on the committee in order for us to select whoever the new teachers might be. Just a very instrumental role. And now that they had the time within their schedule to be able to do it, they were able to actually really help facilitate. And we're not coming here to be able to say, it's not working, it is very much working. But we are saying after five years, is there ways to improve? And so we've been meeting at building levels, meeting with the staff, looking at the current system and saying, is there a way that we can improve the current system in order for us to better meet the needs of the teams? And then also other things, as we look at the staffing for next year, I know we often talk about this in the spring, but there's some things that have stood out that we think that we would like to be able to add in looking at shifting the department heads, but also just some general needs in the area of SEL for the buildings. So with that, I think I was going to turn it over to one of the two of you that share here. Jeff, just talk a little bit about some of the current challenges that we have with our structure.
So as you may be aware, with the eight department heads, they are obviously teachers primarily in different buildings. And so we come together to work on a consistent basis and we expect that our department heads are traveling through buildings, having opportunities to watch their teachers in the departments and serving to support them. I think if you take a look at the fourth slide, you'll see that some of these pieces have sort of bubbled to the surface and some of the challenges that we face. And I want to really be very clear about the fact that we're coming together to talk about this as the limitations and restrictions and the challenges. This is not about individuals, this is not about professional performance or individual abilities. We're really starting to focus on the challenges or the limitations when it comes to being in multiple buildings and working with teachers across the six whole continuum. So as you can see, there's some pieces that have surfaced there and what I believe we've seen, and obviously I only have the one year of perspective, but from the understanding that I've heard from my fellow team members, we really were feeling that there were some challenges in terms of communication and leadership at the high school from our teachers in terms of what they were seeing with that department structure. So in response to that, one of the things we did was to ask them. So we did some surveys of our.